Yes, welcome to I A C E roju. Target S S C C G L and C H S L English Session fourteen paper discuss chettam. Yes, so question number one, me chedu chadavanti. Given below are four jumbled sentences. Pick the option that gives their correct order, re-arrangement of sentences or jumbled sentences. So, chudavu, me konni techniques chepanu, right? Entadi, epudu ena guruthu pettukondi manaku. It was to general ga start hotu, ita general ga yemantaru, itta needi manam yemankuntaamo. Sir, iti okapronoun kada, daan to ela start cheshtamu, kani ikkada itta needi manaku dummy subject outundhi. Ante, dummy subject. Ella thulustundhi sir, dummy subject ante, asalaina subject ikkada raastaru. It was a fine day, ante, fine day nee anidhi main subject outundhi. Aroju, manchi roju, ante, akka ninni start cheshtamo, right? General ga, it was anidhi introduce jedanki pan cheshtundi. There was anidhi kuda, there was a king, there was a king in a village. Okavillage lo okavilleja untdidi, marie, athano illa chesadu, alla chesadu, manchi chesadu ched. Ante, ivi beginning statements aya chance untundi, right? So kabati, abhi manam first parigunalu ke tisukute konta easy aya chance undhi, chudavu. Emanadu, it took, I, sorry, I took a deep breath and inhated the air, right? Okav deep breath tiskoni, okusari, a, eeno lopelki pillchukunnaanu antunnadu, sari. It was a fine spring morning, manchi hint dorkindi. Marie, B to yedena start outunda, sir, okkate okkate B to start outundhi, chalo chudam. Inka cross check cheskundam, right? So, ivannikuda, manam okusari bani cross check cheskundam, chudandi. It was a fine spring morning, annadu, travata, A yemannadu? I took a deep breath and inhated the air. A air anidhi inhale cheskunnaanu, travata, yemannadu, D ochindi. The freshness in the air, air lo unna freshness antunnadu, ella thulustundhi? Air lo freshness unna di ni ella thulustundhi, ella thulustundhi sir? Adi, a air anidhi inhale lopelki pillchukunte nee kada thulustundhi? Marie, a pillchukodamo anidhi mudataka ekkada jergindi, inhale the air. Ante, A travata, kachitanga manaki emraavali, D raavali. A travata, ikkada ledu D, A travata, ikkada ledu D, A travata, ikkada ledu D. Illa guda manam chusko ochu, A di better ga, A di speedy ga outundho, dhani manam chusko ochu, right? So, but at the same time, speed jayalate, accuracy is also important, right? Accurate ga guda undari, right? Accurate ga guda undari, right? So kabati, itvanti konni techniques chuskondi. So, tapakunda, A sentence lo ante, vaadi tapak, illa ichadu ante, tapakunda, okav message untundi. Edo disorder lo ivadu, avani kalipite chakkati story outundhi. Ante, okadan travata okkati, okadan travata okkati, okadan travata okkati. Alla formaiyattu ga untundi, alla guruthu pettukondi, right? So, option B is your right answer. Select the most appropriate option to fill in the blank antunnadu, chudavu. His lung cancer was antunnadu. Epudu ena guruthu pettukondi, was anidhi, yavari family memberu? B okav family memberu, B family memberu, B family lo yavarevaru untaru? Am okkadu untaru, E's okkadu untaru, R okkadu untaru, Was okkadu untaru, Were okkadu untaru? B okkadu untaru, Being okkada untaru, right? Ivannikuda, manaku guruthu pettukondi, B okav family members. VT travata, manam usual ga, yeme vartamo ante, noun or pronoun vartachu? Leeda VT travata, manam yeme vartachu, noun or pronoun vartachu? Leeda adjective vartachu, leeda yeme vartachu, verb vartachu. Epudu guruthu pettukondi, verbu keni forms unna i manaku, sir? Verbu V one, V two, V three, V four. Inkokati kuda undi manaku, V one chivara yes anidhi kuda, V one chivara yesu, ESu, ISu antaru. Guruthu pettukondi, ee padhalato, ivi mind lo fixai pundi, right? Ee padhalato, hundred and one percent do, V one kanpincha kodudu, verbu okav rupamu, V one yesu kanpincha kodudu, verbu okav rupamu, V two kanpincha kodudu. Kanpistheen kanpinchali, V three or, before, din okav chinni exception, exception gada, logical ga nee untundi, nin travata chutthan. But ee rule aita rasukondi, right? Aithi, V three epudu vartamo ante, V three epudu vartamo ante, subject to receiver ainapudu, receiver of the action. Ante, actionu pondutunnadu ante, V three, ledu chesstunnadu ante, V four, chesstunnadu ante, V four. Anaga, dinne, manam active voice antunnamu, dinne yemantunnamu, passive voice antunnamu, right? So, ikkada manaku chusthe, pick anidhi V one poindhi. Brought anidhi, bring, brought, brought. Me ko answer, context prakaran ga answer teleka pina grammatical ga help outunda, chudam, right? So, of course, brought anidhi, V three aya chance undhi, dinne illa veddamu, right? Idi wrong aindhi. Buy anidhi enti, buy anidhi, V one kada, buy, bought, bought, poindhi. Pile up, piled, 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 pile kuda V one ahothundi. Savaa leedo, answer yemavali, B amvadi, clear ga undhi. Ella ch, ella chesanu answer, ella chepanu? Marie, sir, ee prakaran ga manam chusthe, easy aipaini. Yes, brought on ante, carry anidhi, edmaadi, carry, continue leeda, carry ani arthamu, right? So, his lung cancer was carried by years of smoking, ante, continue outu vastundi, years of smoking lo, marie, ee vidangga manam chutthan. So kabati, manaku, idi right answer, okav chinni, exception undanana kada, yemannanu? Idanee general ga vinayu untaru miru, right? Ee padhalataravata, manaku verbu vartalsusthe, yeme vartalsusthe, verbu vartalsusthala. However, noun or pronoun vartachu, adjective vartachu, epudu stithi chappalsochinappudu. Ante, okav subjecti okav, ikkada dinke mundu subjecti vartan kada, ee subjecti okav stithi chappalsochinappudu, noun or pronoun adjective vartam. Kani, noun or pronoun yedena, marie, pannini receive cheskunnaadu ani ante, ivi vadi, V three vartamu, ledu, we do or ante, ivi vadi, V four vartamu, idi matram thulusu. Aithi, sari, marie, meka ta yeme vada kodudu, V one, V one yesu, V two kada. Kani, okav sandarpamlo, V one vartachu, but ento okav sir, chudandi miru? The window, ee sentence chudandi, the window is open annadu, the window is open. Sir annadu, open anidhi V one, open anidhi V one, marie, wrong avvali kada, wrong avvali kada, right? Kani, idi correcta outundhi, endukante, idi V one anidhi kadma, idi adjective outundhi, yemoutundhi? Adjective, ante, window anidhi, open, open stithilo undhi, open stithilo undhi. Marie, adhenti sir, the window is opened around ante, opened guda correcta outundi, dhani meaning dhani kundhi. Entadi, the window is opened, the window is opened by someone, ante, ikkada action, entadi, ikkada action. Ikkadi enti, state, stithi. Window, the, the school is open, the school is open, the office is open, the institute is open for reading. Vinayu untaru kada, right? Ante, open stithilo untundi, state, stithi, apudu illa vartachuma, itvanti, me konni manam chuskunte saripotundi. Idi correcta outundi, idi correcta outundi, right? Idomo, action outundi, idi yemoutundi, stithi outundi, right? Window okav stithi illa undi, open, but ikkada stithi kada, evadu open chespoiyadu, the window is opened by someone, right? Ivi thangga ivi chudandi, but, idi okav exception ga manam chudachu, right? Motthanaki right answer thulustundi kada, option B is your right answer. Question number three, chadavanti. In the sentence, identify the segment which contains the grammatical error antunnadu. Grammatical error ekkada undu, chudam. My mother told, yavarki chepindi, vinnade yavaru, me, right, told me. Yemanchepindi, what did, what did your mother tell you? To speak, two plus V one correct ga nee undhi, to speak, what is truth kadandi, true anali, yemanali? True, guruthu pettukondi, enduk sir, ante, truth anidhi enti, yemoutundha ma, noun outundi, yemoutundi? Noun, adi, true anidhi yemoutundi, true or false anivinnara, true or false, idi adjective outundi, yemoutundi? Adjective, meka iti okkati, okav konni words chutthan, right? When I say words, manaku, idi noun anukunnam, idi adjective anukunnam kada, guruthu pettukondi, truth mundu general ga, manam article vartamo, right? But the true anidhi manam vada kodudu, arthamothundi kada, the true anidhi vada kodudu, just true antavati, adjective la mundi, pannirannanu? I am true, I am truth anakodudu, I am the truth. Sir, okav ikkano dialogue vinnam sir, ekkada vinnaru? Don't trouble the trouble, if you trouble the trouble, the trouble troubles you. I am not the trouble, I am the truth antadu, right? Adi, manam dialogue lo chuskunnapadiki kuda the vartunnam, yemvartunnamo? But you cannot say, I am truth, I am, neenay nijani. Neenay nijani, I am true ante, neenu a situation lo true unnaanu, I am the truth ante, nuve trueta, nuve nijama? Alla kada kada general ga, right? So, ee vidangga manam vartamo, anaga, ikkada miru guruthu pettukondi, true ki mundu articles vadalame, enduko? Adjective kabati, enduko? Adjective, adi noun mundu manam yeme vartachu? Articles vartachu, so kabati, general ga, what is true anidhi, what is true? Ante, nijani, manam nijani ma chutthan, kabati, manam truth kada, enti? Okkate guruthu pettukondi, truth ochinappudu, general ga manam yeme vartachu? Tha, ledu ante, marie, true anidhi, adjective kabati, no article, right? You should be true to your, you should be true to yourself antaru, neeknuve true undali anali, right? Next, so, answer enti, A, option A lo mistake undhi, what is true, right? What is true? Next. Fourth question. Identify the best way to improve the underlined part of the given sentence. If there is no improvement required, select no improvement, right? Underline ayesadu chudam, on anidhi chesadu chudam, right? Miru epudu ena guruthu pettukondi, sad ane padhamuto, angry ane padhamuto, right? Annoyed ane padhamuto, entadi, annoyed ane padhamuto, manaku rondo prepositions velachu, okkati enti? With, inkokati enti? At, with anidhi persons to, ante, with anidhi someone, someone ante person ekkada? Adi, etta needi something, entadi, something, ante, idi things to vadaali, idi persons to vadaali. With anidhi persons to, ee padhalato, adi, etta needi enti, visayani ki, thingu to, okusari chudavu. Not only the parents, parents matram ei kada, but also the children were correct ga nee undhi, of course, fill in the blank, bold, underline chesadu, akkada manam focus cheshta saripotundi kada. Sad, dash, leaving the house antunnadu, on aitha ra kodudu, right? So, idi manishini kada, manishi anidhi kada, kada, ante, ikkada person anidhi kada, kada? Et vadaandi, yemvadaandi? Et, adi, sad with anidhi, epudu vartamo, person to unnapudu, angry with, annoyed with, epudu person. I am angry with you, I am annoyed with you, adi, I am angry at your or am annoyed at your performance, at your performance, alla guruthu pettukondi, right? Idi preposition lo manam cheskonayu unthavu, so easy answer aipaini enti? At, at, right? So, ee vidangga, marie, idi guruthu pettukondi. So, epudu for example say, ikkada preposition ochinandhi, leaving anidhi yemoutundi, preposition travata, gerant antar kada, meka idea unda? V one I N G vartam, ikkada, okavela, noun vartey, a nounu possessive case lo undari. For example, not only the parents but also the children were sad at Ramos leaving, Ramu leaving kada, Ramos leaving, leeda my leaving, leeda your leaving. Ante, dinke mundu noun or pronoun vartey, noun or pronoun vartey, possessive case lo undari. Possessive case ante enti, noun chivara, positive yes vedte, possessive case outudi. Adi, pronouns ko already default ga konni pronoun cases unnaai, ante kada, possessive cases unnaai. I ki possessive case is my, we ki possessive case is our, idanee list undi kada manaku, right? Adi follow vandhi. It is your right answer. Select the most appropriate meaning of the given idiom. Weather the storm, weather the storm, ante, storm anidhi negative sense kada, right? Storm ante, urumulu meripulu vachayantari kada, dhani weather chediyadamu vadi, ikkada verbu ga dhuskunnadu. Weather the storm ante, managed to survive. See, Corona ochindi banna, but I weathered the storm, ante, I managed to survive. A time lo chala mandi maranalu jarigai, right? Enno maranalu sambaminchai, but I weathered the storm, ante, I managed to survive. Nee survive ayaenu, apudu ee context lo idi vartanu, right? So, managed to survive, right? Dhantlo gattekayanu, survive ayaanu, brathikibatta gattanu antankada. So, weather the storm, storm nu weather chediyadamu ante, storm anidhi negative sense kada, right? A negative sense lo unna kuda, dhani manam gattekagalegamu, dhani tapichkuni bhaitapaddamu antankada, survive ayaam. Next, A is your right answer, fifth question, next, sixth question. Choose the most appropriate option to change the narration antunnadu, direct or indirect speech. Meka thuluskada, ikkada comma to separate aye di past tense undi, inverted commas lo unna, kala ni marchali manaku. I want enti, edma, meka thuluskada, I l ante, L L double L unna kondi, I will ani arthamu, leeda I shall ane guda arthamostundi. But I want enti, H A V E ani arthamu, ante, I have been learning. Marie, tense maralika kada, indirect speech lo have been enkaavali, had been, had been ikkada undhi, has been, is, was, okkate okka second lo answer achesindi, antena, right? So kabati, ninety nine percent of the time, akkada, manaku verbu ga gane change isthoo unthadu. Of course, inka meka ta daggar guda indachu, but ninety nine percent of the time, ikkada chudandi. Ikkada chusindi, ikkada correct ga undi ante, meka ta vaatiki velandhi, right? Endukata time save chesko ochu, aaneyu thixumto, right? Ante kada ma, eddi, past tense undhi, past tense undi, inverted commas lo unni tense, present tense undi, past kaavali, past undi, past perfect kaavali, ante kada, right? Adi, ikkada, past tense unnapadiki indalo, idi epudu change kada, universal truth unna, scientific fact unna, ikkada past tense unna, ikkada kuda, adi tense maintain outudi. Right, man, inkokav sandarpam enti, ikkada said kaakunda, say unna, will say unna, ante, present tense unna, future tense unna, apudu kuda inverted commas lo ni maradu. Aithi, ee part aitha, eti peristithlo, tense marakodudu. Tense marakodudu, past tense e untaru, saido, informedo, questionedo, interrogatedo, requestedo, askudu untaru, kani, adi, past tense lo nee untaru. Ee first part aitha, change avakudu, ante, change avakudu ante, kala ni change aikudu, ee kalam maintain chesadu, adi chaya. Din prakaranu, marie, ivannikuda, manam, gavenchko, of course, idi, okkati second lo answer chesam, right? Next. Select the most appropriate meaning of the given idiom antunnadu. Catch up with, I will catch, catch up with you, I will catch up with you very soon, I will see you soon antavu, I will catch up with you very soon. Ante, update stanu, update, ante, to update one another on life events. A life lo jergina konni events, update cheskundam, catch up with someone, ante, antipetukoni unthavu, update, epudu kuda, athani life lo yen jargutundi, enti anidhi, epudu kuda update aayunthavu. Especially, idi news reporters ko vartarati, manam general life lo guda vartachu, to catch up with someone, right? I will catch up with you, I will catch up with you always, ante, update cheskuntu unthavu. Right, so, yavareena manan ninni chidorenga velipotu unnaru, apudu bada paduthundari, hey, don't worry, I'll catch up with you very shortly or very often, alla kuda vartachu. Eighth question. Select the word which means the same as the group of words given antunnadu, right? So, ikkada, one word substitute kada, a sacred song, pavitra mayna song anta, used to praise the deity. Okav deity ni, okav devu unni, anichappukochu, right? Okav deity ni, pravitra mayna, okav sage nu, sadhu nu, marie, sacred song, pogaddamu ani antunnadu, pogaddamu antunnadu. Marie, pogaddamu anidhi, yemantaru ante, right? Psalm antaru, yemantaru? Psalm, P is silent enti, psalm. Tough, tough, tough ante, bunch of hair ama, bunch of hair, leeda grass ani guda jappachu, right? Especially, mudhi unthadi dhani ki, mudhi ante, not ekkada? Not, K N O, K N O T, not, K N O T, not. Right, tough ante, idi meaning gostudi, bunch of hair unthadi, bunch of grass unthadi, mudhi jastaru, right? So, odhi ante, a lyric poem ani artham, a lyric. A lyric poem. Chamber lane, chamber lane ante, guruthu pettukondi, right? Chamber lane ante, chamber lane ante, yes, ikkada, manaku, right? Okariki sahay paddamu, yavarki king or queen ku, right? So, enti ante? Helper in household affairs, household, leeda helper leeda charge ani guda jappochu, charge lo unnadu. Charge in household affairs, household affairs of a queen or a king, queen or queen. Household affairs, yavari okav household affairs, king leeda queen, right? So, dhantlo, a charge lo unna athani, chamber lane antaru. Yes, of course, right answer yemautundi, sal, meka ta ikkada note cheskondi, very important, right? Ninth question. Select the correctly spelled word annadu, marie, yedi correct ga spellayundu, chudavu, right? Bath, B A T H anochu, B A T H, ee guda correcta outundi, right? Both are correct, marie, meka ta, i wrong enti ani, bank rapsi annadu, T undaledi, P T C Y, bank rapsi, divala tiyadamu, apullo koorkodi povadamu, debt anjappachu? Leeda liquidation ani kuda jappachu, yeman jappachu, very important words, liquidation ani kuda jappachu? Leeda insolvent anidhi, miru vinayu untaru kada, miru vocabulary niche kuneetappudu, insolvent, ivannikuda, okkati no, right? Marie, across ante thuluskada, inni seela avasarama, A C R O, S S, across, right? Adi, consigns ante enti? Consigns, right? C O N, C O N, S C I N C, consigns. Marie, morally, morally wrong or right, ante, to know something which is morally wrong or right. Consigns lo undaramante, manchi chadu, teleyada, move, right? Morally right, morally to know, to know the things which are morally right or wrong. Moral ga right unnaayarangadi, consigns lo undandi, spruhato undandi, edi tappu, edi oppu anidhi thuluskavale, manakonsignsas lo undari, sensors lo undari antar kada, spruhato undandi, consigns. So, marie, ee vidangga ostundi, motthanaki, dokkate correct spelling unai, meka ta, enti, konta careful ga chudandi, right? Next. Tenth question. In the sentence, identify the segment which contains the grammatical error antunnadu, chudavu. Despite her tiredness, comma, right? So, despite travata, off vada kodandi, right? Idi correct ga nee undhi, in spite to off vadaali, meka thuluskada, right? In spite of, despite to off vada kodudu, so, bhagane undhi. Despite her tiredness, ante, tiredness unnapati ki kuda, yenchesindi, Meera, Meera went in the kitchen. Went, innepudu vartamo, innanidhi, static ga, movement lenappudu. Static ante, Meera is in the kitchen, Meera is in the kitchen, kitchen lo undi, etu ante, pani jergatledu. Kani, went anidhi, pani jergindi kada, apudu, idi dynamic outundi, yemoutundi? Dynamic, dynamic ga unnapudu, into vadaali, yemvadaali? Into, inn kada, enti? Into, ante, movement, transfer, okav position nunchi, inkokav position move outundi ante, inn kada, into vadaali, right? So, I went into the room, I went in the room kada, I went into the room. So, idi easy ga nee undu, mira answer chesundharu, nirankundanu, right? See, is your right answer. Identify the best way to improve the underlined part of the given sentence. If there is no improvement required, select no improvement, antanu, okay? The state government has faced, yem face chesindi anta, major challenges, both, illa, both administratively, right? So, face chesindi, verb kada, illa face chesindi, major challenges facesindi, verb, action verb kabati, adverb vada. The state government has faced administratively, of course, major challenges administratively as well as politically, idi adverb ei undhi, idi adverb ei undhi. Den to join aindhi, as well as, kani, dinke mundi yemunna di? Both undhi, so, both ochinappudu, A and D, and untaru, both anidhi, etu ante, conjunction to join outudi, and, adi, either ochinappudu, den to join outudi or chappali miru. Neither ochinappudu yemoutundi, den to join outundi, nor, yemoutundi? Nor, adi, manaku, inkentma, not only ochinappudu, den to join outundi general ga, but also, ee points guruthu pettukundari kada miru? Yes. Yes, so, weather to kuda, or ostundi, weather or not antankada, right? So kabati, both ochindi kabati, as well as kada, yemundali, and, marie, ekkadi undi, both administratively and politically, be is your right answer, easy ga nee answer chesar. Next. Choose the most appropriate option to change the voice antunnadu, yemantunnadu? They are building a house. Valu okav house nu construct cheshtunnaru, leeda build cheshtunnaru, ekkada, a house anidhi, ekkada untundi anta? Next to our school, next to our school. Marie, house anidhi, next to our school anta, a house anidhi, ekkada undi, place enti, place of house is what? Next to our school antunnadu, sari. Idi, passive voice ki convert cheyantunnadu, meka thuluskada, building nu runduga vidagodey, yemoutundi? V three forms plus B forms rayali, right? Ee building nu main verbu no, manam runduga vidagodey, B plus V three, building ku V three yemoutudi, built outudi, yemoutundi? Built, build, built, built, send, sent, sent. Alla, built, marie, B forms yemvadaali, building ninni, I N G form dhuskochi, V three antangabati, ikkada, B form yemvadaali? Being built, being built anidhi, ekkada undi, 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 right? Being built anit lo undi, kani, ikkada tense anidhi yemundhi? Or undhi, right? Marie, tense change avakudu kada, marie, object anidhi, manaki ikkada subjectai potundi, passive voice lo, chudavu. Marie, past tense yemaina unda, chudavu, past tense yemaina unda, chudavu, past tense, ane guda present tense lo unnaai, bhagane undhi, chudavu, epudu anta easy ga ledu. Next to our school, yen jergindantaa? Next to our school, yen jergindi? Okav house, a house anidhi, mana, ante, ma, ma school prakkarne, right? Next, ma school travata, next ante enti? Travata, ma school travata, okav house anta, is being built by them, idi correct ga nee undhi, venadaniki, travata. Next to our school is being built, ne, ama school being built, kada kada? A house is being built, kabati, idi object kala edu, object kala edu, ante, ee object, idi object kada kada? Idan tan, extra information, object entma, a house eh, so kabati, B poindhi, C chudam. A house next to our school, right? Is being built by them, ante, yemantunnadu? Okav house anta, ekkada, next to our school is being built by them. Idi kuda bhagane undhi, endukante, a house ekkada, next to our school, ante, next to our school anidhi, change esadu chudandi, ivannikuda extra information, a house ku mundu ekkada rasesadu, house ku mundu, travata, ikkada rasesadu, right? So kabati, ikkada manam, idaina chappukochu, idaina chappukochu, endukata, virundu, house ku pakpakana unnaai, chudam. Is being built by them annadu, idi possibilitya, next, D chudam. A house is, sari, idan tan yen chesadu, first yen chesadu? A house is being built by them, ekkada, next to our school. Illa rondo options, idaina chudachu, idaina chudachu, annapudu, evadu chudandi, meka clear ga chutthan. A house anti, right? A house ekkada thunnaru kada, ekkada, next to our school, so kabati, a house ke yundhi? Malli, next to our school ei yundhi, house ku daggar ga neyundhi, kani, irundit lo, manam yedi choose chesko lekpotunna kabati, as it is ga, unnadanee, manam, ee optionu chuschestamu. So kabati, a house is being built by them, ekkada, next to our school, next to our school, last lo raseshtam. So, D is your right answer, D is your right answer, right? Next. Select the most appropriate option to fill in the blank antunnadu, okay? He had scarcely sat, right? Had anidhi, helping verbu, idi, sit, sat, sat, right? V three form, sat down, epudu, dash, there was a knock at the door antunnadu. Miru guruthu pettukondi, epudu ena, meko hardly okav sentence lo kanpinchina, scarcely okav sentence lo kanpinchina, rarely okav sentence kanpinchina, barely okav sentence lo kanpinchina. Inkokav sentence ku mundu, ante, inkokav sentence ante enti, subject plus verbu ku mundu, miru guruthu pettukondi, when rayali, of course, before guda rayechu, usual ga yeme vartamo, when. So, right answer yemautundi, when, adi, inkokav sentence lo, right? Ikkada, idi enta, when dhuskuntundi, yen dhuskuntundi? When, adi, miru guruthu pettukondi, no sooner, meko, no sooner okav sentence lo kanabadu te, inkokav sentence mundu, inkokav sentence ante, subject plus verbu ku mundu, miru, T H N, than vadaali, yemvadaali? Than, meka guruthunda, sooner ante enti, comparative degree kada? Soon, sooner, soonest, marie, comparative degree lo, T H N, thane kada, vada idi, illa guruthu pettukunda, saripotundi. Comparative degree kada, sooner, antena, right? Comparative degree lo yemvartamo, T H N, than ane conjunction kada, T H E N kada, T H, eh, jagrata. Inkokati guruthu pettukondi, idoka point, idoka point, third point. Me ko okav sentence mundara, as soon as ochinandu kondi, okav sentence ku mundara, as soon as osthe, inkokav sentence mundara, etu ante, no, do not use any conjunction. Dinke mundara, do not use any conjunction, exam lo, okav conjunction istad, jagrata, akkada error mark chechu, do not use any conjunction. Ivannikuda manam classroom lo ma chutthan, right? Ee points guruthu pettukondi, so hence, your answer is A. Fourteenth question. Select the antonym opposite antunnadu, scurrilous, scurrilous ante entma, scurrilous ante, unpleasant words ma chadamu, idi adjective outundi, oh use to, eh, ndi, eh, idi, scurrilious, sorry, scurrilious, scurrilous, scurrilous comments ante, derogatory, derogatory ante, pairu nu paduchese, pairu nu derogatory comments antaru, dinne unpleasant anochu, yemanochu? Unpleasant anochu, leeda abusive comments antar kada? Abusive ante, itharula ku, itharula, itharula, enti, reputation, itharula pairu bangam kaligince maatalu, vaatine, appalling guda antaru, yeman taru? Appalling ani antaru, criticizing ani guda jappachu, yeman jappachu? Criticizing, 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 ivannikuda, miru guruthu pettukavallchindi, derogatory, right? So, criticizing leeda denouncing, denounce ani kuda antaru, yeman taru? Denounce ani kuda antari, padhalani, miru guruthu pettukavallchindi, right? So kabati, manam, ivannikuda chappachu, din inkokav word guda istanu, vituperative anna kuda denandi? Vituperative, very important. V I, V, T U, vituperative, vituperative anna kuda abusive, ante, unpleasant, vituperative ani kuda manam chappachu, right? So, antonym madigadu kada, marie, covert ante enti, rough ga unde dhani, manam yemantamu? Covert antamu, co, earth, right? Covert ante, rough ga undedi, sophisticated ante enti, highly developed, leeda, advanced, sophisticated technology, sophisticated people, highly developed ante, advanced, advanced ane yunni going. Insolent, insolent vairu, insolvent vairu, bankruptcy, annan kada, bankruptcy anna, insolvent anna, debt anna, liquidation anna, ivannikukaati. Insolent vairu, insolent ante, showing lack of respect, lack of respect nu chuvinchadamu, lack of respect, enta, rude ga pavartinchadamu, insolent antaru. Dinne manam, impudent ani kuda antaru, yeman taru? Impudent anochu, impertinent ani kuda anochu, yemanochu? Imperative ani kuda anochu, impertinent, ee padhalani rasukavallchindi, repeated ga unthai, C H S L and C G L lo, right? Inkak, inkak complimentary ante, guda meka thulusu, kompli, ellaiyundhi, complimentary ante enti, additional ga, manaki dena pogadtha ani jappachu, complimentary. So, scurrilous ante enti, derogatory unpleasant, but complimentary ante enti, pogaddamu praise chayedamu. Answer opposite yemautundandi, D is your right answer, right? So, ivannikuda chakkaga, notes lo rasukuntu undandi.